I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. You may be seated. First, on our agenda, we have a vision and mission statement. Would someone be so kind to read the vision and mission statement?
The vision of Macon County School System is that quality education will help students to ensure they will become productive lifelong learners. Macon County School System, in pursuit of its vision, will provide an appropriate quality curriculum and a supportive learning environment so that all students will have the necessary knowledge and skills to improve their quality at law.
Thank you, sir. Now, we move to item D, which is the approval of the agenda. There are no revisions that I'm aware of, and so the agenda was sent out to you earlier. We had some hiccups with our service. But our entertainment motion at this time that we approve the agenda that's for.
Say.
It's been moved by Ms. Spikes and seconded by Mr. Blue that we approve the agenda. Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the agenda being approved, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? So the agenda is approved. Item E is informational agenda. See, we have various here, so we're gonna ask that you come at this time.
Good afternoon. I've been here before, but those that don't remember me, my name is Jeff Carter. I am the superintendent on Macon County High School project. Don't know where we left off last. My colleagues were here. But sometime late March, we poured the first slab on grade, which was about 20,000 square foot, into which now we're laying the block, just on the engineering, ROTC, and the band room. We're prepping for the other areas, which is another 20,000 square foot, which would be the main corridor, all the way back into the science labs and the weight room. We're gonna be pouring that slab on Thursday. We're gonna continue with prepping for underground electrical and plumbing throughout the gymnasium, the gang bathrooms, and the dressing rooms over in the gymnasium areas, which we will be pouring them in late, late month. And I think that'll pretty much catch us up for the Macon County. I also have a update for the HVAC, the way we're doing at the elementary school. We've replaced 11 of the 12 units in the 100 wing, working on the controls and test and balance in the 100 wing. And they started the demo on some units in the 800 wing, demoed ceiling heaters in the entire school, and installed the condensers from the mini splits in the kitchen. And we're gonna continue working over there throughout the month. As far as I'm told, we're on schedule over there. Any questions?
No, we have good weather to get a lot of things.
Yes, sir, because days aren't getting longer. I'm about to leave here and go back to work.
And board members? Okay, Mr. Carter, we thank you. We don't have any questions.
All right, appreciate you.
All right, we appreciate you, so thank you. Okay, item number two, discussion of future proposal of solar energy. That's Mr. Beckham, right. I think we have our proposal handed out relating to Mr. Beckham, our presentation.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good to see all of you. As you know, some of you were not banquet years tonight, a week ago, and we honored the football team, the school system, and whatever, had a good time, had a good turnout, and we were happy to do that. Part of my job is doing that, and part of my job is trying to find more income for the Board of Education and the county commissioners. And tonight, that's what we're here about. If you look, hopefully, all of you, I got with Ms. Northcut yesterday and everything, but I don't know if you got everything, but the first thing I'd like to look at is something called a tax pilot summary belt line energies. Do all of you have a page?
Yes.
In there that looks like that?
Yeah.
Okay. Bottom line is, and I'll do this as quickly as we can, all of you remember that two or three years ago, we didn't know much about solar energy, and all of a sudden, they looked like somebody with measles sprouting up in Taylor County. And if you go through Taylor County on 19, you just see solar energy paddles everywhere. And one of the things, after going up and seeing what Taylor County was doing last year, I started putting the word out that I'd like to see us do the same thing in Macon County. If they can do it in Macon County, I mean, in Taylor County, we can do it in Macon County. And so, we have had the luxury Belt Line Energy is one of the bigger ones that did one in Taylor County. They came to us and talked to us about it. Georgia Power, if you look right there, you can see that Georgia Power is going to put $3 billion in the gross economic output in 2017. This has got 16 up there, but it was approved in 16 by the legislature for 2017. The good news is that this is a three-phase project. They're gonna do about $3 billion worth in the state of Georgia this year. Two years from now, 19, they're gonna do about $4 billion worth. And in '21, they're gonna do $6 billion worth. So you're talking lots, and that's with a B now. We don't want to confuse you. That's lots of money. You can say all about the jobs created. What a tax pilot is, is that many towns, when you start talking about projects that cost 80 to 100 million dollars, very few people go to the bank and they can borrow that kind of money. And so, they wind up going through the Development Authority and whatever, and then the money comes to the Board of Education and comes to the commissioners, not in the form of taxes, but in the form of the payment in lieu of taxes, and that's what the pilot stands for. And so, you know, I'm just trying to give you a little bit of background as to where we are.
Yes.
The first step down there, it says transaction, which is that the Development Authority has already voted to approve a solar energy pilot for this town. That will come in the form of something we'll look at in just a minute, but it's an $88 million bond that will be issued. And most of you are familiar with bonds, because I think y'all just got through doing some bond issues with the school dealing with that. But the Development Authority approves it, then we go to the county commissioners, because we have to get approval from you and from the county commissioners to do any kind of what they call tax abatement. And we don't really like tax abatement. We don't like to talk about it, but it gets down to the bottom line is this. If we don't give some tax abatements to companies who want to locate here, guess what? They're gonna go somewhere else. And so, that's where we are, is that we're planning to do a tax abatement. If you will look at page two, this says Belt Line Energies, and the distinguishing mark on that is that there are some red numbers out to the side. I hope when you got your copy, it came out red. It might not be, but it does say, "School Board prored out a millage distribution." All of you see that page?
Yes.
The extreme right-hand column. Bottom line in this project is that if you start with the first year, which will be 19, y'all will receive $4,311.77 more than you're getting now. And that would not be significant. But if you look at the life of the project, you will be receiving all but $4 million in the next 35 years that you're not getting now to go toward the Board of Education. If you look up in a little square up above where it says key metrics, am I going too fast?
No, sir, keep going.
Fine, okay. Under the key metrics, the bottom line is this. If we don't approve this and we leave the land, and this land happens to be out Sageco's road, it's Cop Clyde Smith property, on out a good little way beyond where Warehouse used to be and International Paper is. If we don't approve this and get this project here, you will get $93,840, but you got to divide that with the county. If we do this, we will, as a county, we will get $6,207,000 over the next 35 years. So, bottom line is, even with tax abatements, we're gonna get a lot more money coming into this county to the Board of Education and to the commissioners to help you with your financial needs if we do this. I'll stop right there and see if there's anybody got any questions. Okay?
By the way, I understand it just means simple now, is when you say we're getting $4,000, that's what Clyde's paying taxes on that plan he's got. That's what we're getting now, and with solar thing, we're gonna be getting income from solar.
We're gonna be getting income. Well, right now, Clyde and them have it in a CUPL program that's a conservative program, and, you know, all of us are familiar that it's a conservation program. Okay? At the present time, we're getting about $2,000 to $3,000 through the conservation. I say we, you and the county, off of that land. They will have to take it out of the conservation program. You will get the full amount of the taxes from that land from this point on, and we go along, and we have a long time to make a decision, and sometimes we have a short time to make a decision. So, I hate it that we're on that short line. The commissioners are meeting tomorrow, and I expect that they will vote to do this. But in order to make it a possible, a possibility and make it work, the Board of Education also has to sign to go along with it. So, sorry about the time constraints, but that's the way it is. If you will look, there is, or should be, I think, did I send all of you an email for Regina McNeffy? Is that in that package?
I thought that was on the front.
It is, it's in there.
Okay, thank you. Just yesterday, we have been going back and forth with this company, because we started out at $5.9 million, and just yesterday, this is what they agreed to, which is slightly higher figures than I gave y'all. They agreed, oh, total project, $6,551,000 and change. $250,000 of it will go to the Development Authority to try to continue to do more development stuff. $6,301,039 will go to the county and the Board of Education, and as you saw, of that amount, about $4 million or a little better will actually go to y'all. And I'll stop at that point. There's so much of it.
Gerald, was that supposed to be in the, was that supposed to be in the email?
Is it what?
That information you were just giving us, is that supposed to be in the email?
Well, it's in an email, and I've got another figure. Oh, y'all didn't see that?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. The bottom line is that I had to get this ready for you yesterday, and the first numbers I pointed were slightly lower. But after a little negotiating with the company, we came up with a little more than $200,000 more than those figures. And you have to understand, when you're dealing with something like this, when they first started coming, they were talking about $5.9 million, and in going back and forth, we're up to about $6.5 million now that we have negotiated back and forth. And yet, what we wanted to do was, we wanted to get as much money as possible for the Board of Education and the county commissioner, but we wanted these people to be competitive. Because if they're being, if they're not competitive, and they don't get it, they have to submit it on April the 20th. They will know by May the 20th. And if they don't get it, all of this goes up and smoke. It's wasted effort. But this company was very successful in Taylor County, and they have assured me that if we will do what they're asking to do, these final numbers, that they feel confident that they will get this project. Now, this is also important, because this is not the only one. There are two more projects about equal size that are possibly gonna come to this county. And once we iron out something like this, we're gonna offer this to all three companies, and there's a possibility that this thing could be tripled. You might get three times as good. But I don't want to play Santa Claus here and try to get you dreamed in too high. This is the reality of the one that we feel like has the best chance, the one we have worked with the most, but there are two others looking at the county. And as I said earlier, one of the key things is, if we can get this proposal to where the solar energy people are real happy about it, I think you will not only see some this time in Macon County, I think you will see some more in 19, and you will see some more in '21.
And it also benefits us in other ways, Gerald, because those people come in here and work, and they spend their money here, and we get those sales taxes.
Well, and, you know, sometimes these kind of projects get criticized, because they say, well, we don't create very many permanent, long-term jobs. But the way we look at it is this. By the time that this one is over, what the next one will be coming, and so, even if they're temporary jobs, they will be temporary. By the time they're over, the next one will hit, the next one will hit. And so, you're probably talking about at least 200 to 300 jobs with a project this size. If we get more than one project, you're gonna double that number. If you're gonna get the other one, you'll be like Taylor County. We'll have to import people from South America to help put the stuff together. That's what they found out in Taylor County. They couldn't get enough workforce around, and they had to actually bring people in. So, what I'd rather us do is take on a project we can handle and put our people in Macon County to work, working on this, not where I haven't imported people in here.
Yes, and well, I don't know, but for one, I think Representative Bentley, what, several months ago, gave us a tour of one in Taylor County. I think you, I know Ms. Davis was there.
That's right.
And she was talking about the benefits derived as a result.
That's right.
So, and I mean, to me, in my opinion, I think it's a win-win situation. But, you know, we're the board, so we're the ones that.
But you need us to approve the abatement tonight, Gerald.
What's that?
You need us to approve the abatement tonight.
No, no, you don't have to approve it. We need to get the county commissioners to try to approve it, and then come back to y'all to simply kind of give y'all's okay on what they've done. What I wanted to do tonight was get you to think about it. So, we come back next time, you'll be a little more knowledgeable and in a position to talk about.
But you said April 20th, right?
That's right. That's April of this month.
Yeah.
We're right around the corner.
We don't meet again.
We're gonna meet, I think, where she was alluding to. Yeah.
Well.
It's gonna happen Thursday. I thought we had something else happening Thursday.
We got this Thursday.
Yeah.
Well, and let me, let me put you a little bit of these. I want you to get thinking about it tonight. Actually, as long as y'all have looked at it and have said you generally kind of agree with it, but you need a little more information, if you will approve it by your May meeting, that will be okay. Now, if you want to have a special call meeting, fine, but we don't.
No, we gotta have one anyway.
Okay, well, if you gotta have one, we'd like to have it. But as long as the company feels comfortable that we are on the verge of doing something, and they're okay with submitting it. See, at this point, they've done a lot of research and a lot of talking to the Smith family and putting parcels together, and a lot, a lot of work. But to submit it on April 20th, they've got to turn loose $500,000 of their money, the size of work they've done, just to submit it. And on May the 20th, they got to turn loose about $2 or $3 million, and they want to make sure we're gonna do what we said we're gonna do before that time. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
I know you'll be constantly in contact with.
I will be in touch with all of you through emails and stuff and bring you more information. But hopefully, after tomorrow, we will know exactly what the county commissioners are willing to do, then we're gonna put that information out to the other two solar companies, so that they can count on the same thing. And so, maybe we'll get more than one.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move to item, yeah. I don't know of anything that need to be broken out. Do we have anything that I'm, I'm not aware of? The board members, anything that you guys need? Okay.
I did see some, but I said earlier, she fixed it.
She fixed it. Okay, our girl Friday fixed it, huh? Okay, so I can, I'd like to get a motion that we approve the consent agenda then.
So, move, second.
It's been moved by Ms. Spikes and seconded by Mr. Brunner, that we approve the consent agenda before it's in item L. All in favor of the consent agenda being approved, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? Okay. What happened here? Mine just disappeared. I did, though. Okay, where are we now?
The SPOLO fund.
Mine just disappeared. Financial board. It just got removed. Okay, where are we?
You want to see mine? SPOLO fund, SPOLO fund balance.
Okay, maybe I can have something here. Okay, SPOLO fund balance, okay. Ms. Austin?
Board chair, board members, superintendent, again. Good evening, sir. Our sales tax revenue. In March, we see $92,690.29, which was higher than last month. So, it's always good when we can get an increase. We only seen our 2012 SPOLO fund impacted by that $92,000. And I believe you have the SPOLO fund balance on your E-Board agenda there. So, that total amount is $7,457,528.88 is our total. We didn't have any SPOLO activity at cause of spinners, because of course, that money now is being used for the bond fund. Our inflows outweigh our outflows by 8%, so we have a positive cash flow right now, and we're about 75% complete in this current fiscal year. That concludes my report and SPOLO details. Any questions or concerns that it's on?
I don't think we do. Do we? Do we have any? I, Mr., I have not a question, but an observation. Yes, sir. I know it's still attributable to Parrish being here, but you see, compared to last year. Yeah, it's just.
2013, please.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I guess, I'm just saying, I don't know, but I just attribute it to the construction.
And it could be, or it could be something, we don't know. We might just be connecting a little more to.
International has shut down, too. International Paper has shut down.
Yeah.
There's a lot of new people here, too.
Yeah, okay, so anyway, do we have any comments or questions? Okay, if none, I'll entertain them. Thank you, sir.
Might want to approve the financial report.
Second.
It's been moved by the, of March. Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the financial report being approved, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? So, the financial report is approved. We have Mr. Austin, I mean, Mr. Nelson with us? Did I get something wrong? I just dropped everything, and I'm trying to go from here.
HR report. Chase report.
Where are we?
HR report.
Oh, y'all are gonna have to help me. Okay. All right. We don't have any. We're good. I think I jumped the gun, and y'all didn't definitely catch it. Okay, are we dealing with that then? Because all that was on the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Right. I'm trying to go from, I don't have, I don't have the E-Board now. I don't have the E-Board right now. We're not, we're, I think we.
We're on field trips and fundraisers.
We jumped the gun on something, huh?
Field trip and fundraisers.
Can I see someone's?
You can see mine. You want mine? That's, I already clicked it to field trips.
Okay, that's where we are.
Yes.
No, I'm good.
We should have a car that park up.
Oh, we do? Field trips. Mr. Main, have you gone through field trips?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? We've had, because we got a copy of this, I remember. And I don't think this thing additioned with that, right? It's the same one we received, right?
Correct. Yes, sir. These are all brought to you, all these are school-related. You have. Y'all have them in your folder?
Yeah, we have them.
If there's any questions about any one in particular, y'all can.
Okay. Okay. I have no, okay, you recommend that you've gone through this, no, thank you.
These are all school-related, the school.
Okay.
For our kids, so I'm not sure.
Okay, so can I get a motion that we approve the field trip fundraiser?
So, move, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Blue and seconded by Ms. Spikes, that we approved the field trip before. All in favor of the field trip fundraiser being approved, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? So, approved. Okay, next, we have number three, right?
Correct.
Mr., you'll come talk about the standards that the state is pushing down to us? Mr. Austin?
The Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which is our government AUC in reference to our financial reporting, is suggesting, or have made pronouncements rather, about several different financial statements. Specifically, the GASP 72, 73, and 79. It's referred to us, because it will allow us to be in compliance with GASP. And if we do not adopt it, then we could run the risk of, of course, having findings, because we will be audited based upon these statements. So, I recommend that we retroactively adopt them, because the audit will be in FY16, and these statements were suggested that we adopt it in that fiscal year.
When, when will, aren't we due for that?
We're due, we're scheduled, and they will be here in June.
In June?
In June, yeah. They, they were supposed to come sooner, but they, we got on the.
They're gonna pick this up instead of Macon.
Somebody is doing it, so they will do it later in the year.
So, we're gonna have some new papers, or we're gonna have some of the same?
Well, these are, this will be, like I said, this will not be the same. Usually, Macon, they send folks come out, you know, a group comes out of Macon. Most people come out of Macon.
And the Macon office, not big communication about it, so.
And then, Ms. Austin, tell us again, the recommendation to retroactively approve, what you call, Government Accounting Standards?
Yes.
What does this entail again?
This is what we're gonna be basically evaluated on, I guess, if they're gonna come back a little bit more. You know, they're gonna come in, the standards they're gonna use.
What are we doing?
Not currently. We don't, we do not have these in place currently.
But we're not abiding by them?
We're abiding by the old standards, the old financial statements. So, we are in compliance, but we're not in compliance based upon the new pronouncement statement.
Okay, yeah, I think that, okay.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that.
I just want to make sure we understand.
As long as we're in compliance.
Do we need an exception?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna.
I meant we approve the governmental accounting standard statements retroactively now. He needs it for last year, too.
Right, correct.
So, second.
Okay, it's been approved by Ms. Davis and seconded by. Okay, it's been approved by Ms. Davis and second by Miss Spikes that we approved the retroactively the Governmental Accounting Standard Statement, all in favor of being approved, let it be known by I?
Aye.
Opposes? So it's approved, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Ms. Jackson, are we, are we off there, we can't get it?
I'm on here, but I can't keep you so here.
Yeah, okay, something, me too. No, 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 I'm fine.
Do you have a hard copy in your folder?
I can't find it, but look at this. What you gonna have? You says? Okay, well.
You got it? I don't, I looked over.
Yeah, I did. Okay, so, we going through the normal procedures for every?
Right, what, what, what the schools did, the normal procedures is that the Teachers of the Year from each school come to the board and along with Dr. Burson and Gail Smith and a few other employees, district employees, they sit down and they go over the, when they construct the calendar, they actually do a couple of calendars and they present those, they take them back to their school and the school, the staff, the teachers vote on it, and then it comes back to the board. And what the overwhelming, all three schools, all three schools voted for this particular calendar. This is the calendar that the teachers, the staff, and the district has recommended to the board to be.
Okay, so.
I know better than they, I mean, I look.
Well.
I know we left it off one time.
Yes, and it's being observed on the thirteenth of this calendar.
What is that?
Better than that.
Because it's, it falls on the weekend.
You know, we left it off one time, that's why I made sure.
Yeah, I heard about that.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I don't think we ever do that again. But yeah, so you got, they're satisfied and looked at?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, this is, it's all been, it's a little different than what we're used to doing, but the same amount of days because you gotta do, you gotta do the days. So the days are there, it's just the off days and the days that we observe for vacations and stuff of that nature, it's just it's stretched around a little bit.
Okay, so we get our next year's twenty-third, did that right? Did I see? Yeah.
So are they satisfied with their spring break? Because I heard a lot of.
Well, I did too. What can you do? Yeah, I heard some too.
Again, this is, yeah, they all had an opportunity to voice their concern at the school level and they all voted on this, and this is what they put down, so.
So, so be it. Okay, so we're gonna.
Make a motion to approve it.
My second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Baloo and second by Miss Spikes that we approve make kind of school system calendar for two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, are you ready for the question? All in favor of approving the make kind of school system calendar for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, let it be known by I?
Aye.
Opposing? So we approved.
Sir. Next is a.
Okay, next.
Yeah, next.
Thank you, sir.
Basically, I'm gonna get Mr. Joe Mathis come here. We've got a bus that is a need another motor, and we have two quotes here to replace that motor. And Mr. Joe's gonna explain that to her. That's the first page, just flip it over to the second page.
First of all, good evening, how's everybody?
Good evening, sir.
Only a bus in question is Bus Twelve oh one, it's a Thomas bus. And it's time for us to have to go into replacing the engine. And this engine is twenty-one thousand. And at twenty-five thousand, you're gonna be looking at a new engine, not a reman, not a rebuilt, but it's a brand-new engine. And the reason I wanna go with that one is because it has a five-year warranty on all parts. We could deal with Yancey trucks, but Yanceys basically, they more generally deal with Bluebird buses. And we've ran into a situation where we had to go back and forth on issues because of that area where they're not too familiar with Thomas. So Peach State is strictly Thomas dealership, so. The engine in question, like I said, is a brand-new engine. And of course, it's on.
And what is, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is to go with Peach State.
Okay, and also I think it's the extended warranty.
Yes, 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 with, with the, with the other companies, you're looking at three years and, and you're not gonna get a new engine, they're gonna be just doing a teardown with this here. We can, we can save a lot of money. I feel like it'll be worth it in the long run to go with the new engine because the key, the key is there are other systems that affect this engine. And mainly, the reason why it failed is because of this new DPF filter that's mounted onto the exhaust system. That's something that has to be maintained, it, it has to be replaced every so often. We've replaced it twice. At the time, we could not figure out what the issue was, but then we found out that it was a broken ring inside of the engine that's feeding extra fuel and oil into that system, and at thirty-five hundred dollars, I think that.
And this is gonna continue to happen?
It's gonna continue to happen if we, you know.
What year, what, I mean, what year?
It's old too.
It's an old two, two thousand one.
I was gonna say, it's fifteen years old, is what I was thinking. We sold it for three thousand dollars, and then we put twenty-five thousand in a fifteen-year-old bus, what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I think you need to read the seller.
Well, what I'm saying is, we sold it another week for thirty-five hundred dollars, and here we are gonna put twenty-five thousand in a fifteen-year-old bus? That's my opinion.
It's worth it, it's worth it, because it's a two thousand one, now we're not looking at the difference between the buses we just sold there, even ten years older than that. If we're not gonna get any more buses, we really need to keep these going. And, and I feel like this is, this is gonna be the best, best route for us on this replacement of the engine.
Twenty-five K, huh? Yeah, that's a bit much, but, and five-year warranty, you said?
Five-year warranty.
If anything goes wrong?
Anything goes wrong with it, they're, they're gonna come and, they're gonna do the repairs.
And that's, that's the engine, right?
That's the engine. We don't, we don't generally have issues with the transmissions or anything like that. It's just with this new SCR system that they have on these buses, I mean, this, it, it works the engine extra hard.
Is it in our budget, or is this something that is issued to our budget?
Where the, go ahead, go ahead. This is something that, I hate to say that.
But.
Spikes, right.
Well, ask Joe, you looked at your, your budget, right?
Yeah, we have, we have, I talked to Mr. Austin, we have one.
We have it inside the M and O budget.
It's in that budget?
Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem with it.
It's, it's a lot cheaper to do that than it's about any bus.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. What you look at, you gotta look at.
Talking eighty-plus thousand dollars one of the buses.
Then you consider the fact that, you know, they have less, less to deal there with. But you're not getting all new stuff, and you're not gonna, with the other company, you're not gonna get a five-year one. You're gonna get three years on the shop block then, or one year on there. Oh, boy, so.
We need to put some kind of star on it, we don't get any mixed up, we go sell some crap for twenty-five thousand dollar motor. We're gonna keep that bus for a while.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that should, that should, that should last.
I don't have a problem with it.
I think you would count on Joe to do that.
That wasn't.
Okay, any other discussions? Any other discussions?
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we make purchase of twenty-five thousand dollars of buses.
Peach State.
Peach State, all in favor, let it be known by I?
Aye.
Opposes? So we have approved it.
Joe Mathis, stay right there, Joe Mathis, stay right there, we're talking about camera stations.
What is that, the cameras, okay? Okay.
And, if you want to.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, this is, this is, I, not letter G, but item G, recommendation to approve purchase of cameras for the elementary, middle building. As you know, we currently have, I explained before last time, we have new cameras and up-and-running system over at the high school and it has been functioning well and has been a great asset to the administration. And, and add as preventative as far as discipline and whatnot. This is something that we talked about looking at and the concern, because at the elementary school, that we have a lot of cameras out there, but they're not working. And we have very few, I think, out of all the cameras out there, it's only about five or six cameras that are actually functioning as they should.
About how many cameras do we have at the, where we have the high school now?
Where we have at the high school?
How many cameras we talking about?
You didn't even ask that, that's the cameras.
Exactly sure, but it's, it's over a hundred. I know it's pretty close to two hundred at the elementary school.
Will that, will we have them in every classroom?
It's not gonna be in the classroom, because if we go in the classroom, that's adding to that number. We're talking about main thoroughfares, we're talking about cafeteria, we're talking about gym exits outside and inside the building, you know, just main, main areas, media center, front, front entrance, people come in and.
And then too, then too, when they hook the system up, I mean, you have cameras in some of the classrooms, but they're also.
But we're not gonna go purchase new ones, I'm sorry. Joe, I'm still, you're done, go ahead.
Well, I suggest that we go with Southside Communications with the eighteen seventy oh three?
Yeah, props that, sir.
Explain, explain the disparity there.
Mr. West, Mr. Charlie Westbury is, he's primarily been keeping up all our camera systems. He knows the system well, he knows what, what he has to do to replace things, he knows where everything is. And he's also maintaining our camera system on our, on our buses. And, you know, he pretty much has it all sketched out the way we wanted to configure it. And just feel like, you know, with the business that he's been giving us, he's, he comes in with the best price anyway.
So you got the lowest price, man?
Yes.
You know we look here.
Yes, sir, I know we look at the bottom line. But the thing is, Mr. Westbury, he knows our system, he knows what, you know, what we're looking at here.
And he's been maintaining our current system anyway.
Yes, sir, high school, bus shop, all, all our buses, yes.
I think it's just like air condition, I don't think we need to have one man come in and work.
Exactly, exactly.
That's just my opinion of the board members. I think we need to keep it all, but we know who to call.
Exactly.
Let me, let me ask a question here, I come, I was having a problem, but on a smart charge. The day, the price there, I don't.
Why is it so?
Yeah.
They went in, that company come in, they're a company out of Atlanta, and they quoted everything brand-new, all, all new cameras, not, not really quoting to say, can we go back and, and, and work with the cameras that the school has? And it's the latest system that's out there, and latest and greatest. What Mr. Westbury has done on this one, he has gone in and looked at the cameras, he actually, actually went in and looked at the cameras and knows which ones are actually working. So you've got functioning cameras there in the building, you just have to have the DVRs to support them. And that's really why you see the install, he gets each DVR holds about sixteen cameras. So do the math, that's gonna support a good many cameras out there. Again, and that, and a lot, most of our cameras are functioning, it's just the DVRs that are outdated and we're not supporting cameras right now.
They just need to upgrade.
Yes, sir, just need to upgrade.
I guess with ninety-three thousand dollars for the.
They would fit upgrades, huh?
Yeah.
And I've seen it a hundred thousand, my mind on a hundred thousand.
People don't realize, when, when these cameras are bought, back, back, you know, Mr. Superintendent Ward was here, they, they were the best cameras made at the time. But the problem was, as, as, as you just go with, there was no maintenance plan purchased. So when they started breaking down, they were very expensive at the time to fix them. Now, there's so much competition and so much out there, we drive, if we have to go back and replace a camera now, it, we're talking minimal cost if we do, but right now, we're, we're looking real good at this price right here, so.
Okay.
I'd say we need them myself.
Oh, yeah, I know, we need them. I think everybody, all the board members agree there. Okay, so you recommend Southside then?
Yes, sir.
Communication, okay.
That's my opinion of the board members.
Okay, can I get a motion that we approve Southside Communications for the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and three?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Baloo and second by Miss Burn that we approve Southside Communications for the camera purchase, all in favor of approving Southside Communications, let it be known by I?
Aye.
Opposes? Okay, so we have Southside being approved. When, I should ask, but when are these guys gonna get started on doing this? Do we have?
Soon as we, soon as we get it from real life.
All right.
All right, the next one, the fourth seven?
Yes, sir.
That's what I have.
Yeah, this is the approved Paxton Group MOU to provide job placements for Macon County High School students. And we have, I see him, sir, you're on.
My name is Lorenzo Johnson, I'm with Paxton Program. Came to Macon County some months ago, I talked to Jared Becker first, my effect, you talked earlier. We're really trying to bring a workforce development in Macon County as part of our River Valley Regional Commission. It's our agency that we use for the funding, for the funds. One program we're trying to do is called Career Pathway. We're trying to utilize the job high school seniors who are, who are graduating. And we only, we only gonna select ten seniors, based on our budget, we only select tens. We got a lot of participants who were proud that I came, I came, my effect, when y'all in the job fair?
Yes.
Career Day, I mean, Career Day. And a lot of seniors are very, very interested in the program, which is good, because we want the most known ones. But in the end of the day, qualification will make that student eligible for that program. And so far, we're gonna select ten, we're gonna do five alternates, because no thing will happen between now and the reservation that a kid may go for summer vacation with his parents or whatever make the case, or the military. So we're gonna do fifteen as a whole, but five alternates, ten extra pick. What we were requesting is an in-kind building donation using one of y'all classrooms, because we gotta find a location to house these students for five-day training. Before you go to your actual internship, we do a five-day training with those students, with their earnings and tickets. And what they're trying to do is prepare them for their post-secondary, prepare them for military, and this there, and prepare them for the workforce. So those five days will be very, very critical for those young students, because we gonna learn a lot in five days. So we definitely need that building, that classroom to house those students that keep them coming to America. But we're not trying to relocate them to outside the county, because it just don't make sense. We're trying to do it as possible. And I feel like this program, we should do it every year, but it's a pilot program, we never did it this way before. Usually we go out and recruit from the community as a whole, but my state director said, no, they try to send this. They try to kick those, those seniors who need their extra funds prior to going to college, prior to going to military, to help them with their endeavors going forward. So it's, it's a very, very, I think, good training, good program for Macon County. And hopefully we can do it in some more counties after we see how it go in Macon County.
So you'll be hitting the seniors this year?
Yeah, the seniors, directly May nineteenth, and I know how to go when it comes to motion. And, uh, I know where I go when it come to motion, but we can get that motion as soon as possible, before, before, before next month, if not tonight, if possible. Uh, cause we wanna make sure we go ahead and start contacting those parents. Cause we haven't really gotten to the contacting part. We haven't told any senior that you qualify, that you're gonna be in our program, cause we're way more, we're trying to develop. Because we, you know how the building, it gonna be a complex problem, uh, based on travel and location, and that gonna kinda put a hole in, in, in the plan a little bit. Uh, so if I can get that motion pretty soon, uh, if not tonight, uh, we can go ahead and start calling the parents and make sure they feel our information, to make sure your kids are qualified for this program.
And Mister Johnson, what, what, uh, the school says, what do we need to obligate ourselves as to what, what do you need?
Only in classroom, I, I was told y'all.
Miss Park, she looks like she got something to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, she gonna kinda address that.
I, I just wanna piggyback on what he's doing and endorse, and, uh, because he did come, um, it's, it's a very good need for it. And the, we just look at the big picture to, uh, for career and college and career readiness. And some of these jobs can go into careers, and then, like he said, the funds for summer, they can help buy the kids things for college. You know, so I think it's a great program. We have looked around the building, uh, not jumping ahead of you all, but we have looked around the building and we have set aside and said that we do have space to house him, uh, over the summer. And, uh, so I really do endorse it, and I have my hands directly on it, cause I will be there in the summer.
And, and it's for the summer, the summer...
The, the training, the training is for, what, ten days?
Well, training is five days.
Five days?
You don't need to room the classrooms for five days.
Five days, that's all.
After that five days, they will be assembled. They start on Monday for the class training, Friday they'll be there later training, then Monday they'll start their internship at the worksite. The worksites already went around and got the collaboration with our local businesses. So we got sites, we're working already, just waiting now, pick the ten, uh, students and also the classrooms, so we make sure everything's all working.
So all this comes from Macon County of the class, but bottom line, don't feed, nothing?
No fees, uh, we're, we're offering supplies, uh, we're, we're doing everything for that young person to make sure they're ready.
How y'all get paid?
Say again?
How y'all get paid?
We, we have federal grant program, uh, non-profit.
I was wondering.
Yeah, these funds come to share with our local, matter of fact, I saw some of your problems y'all had earlier with the bus situation. Uh, we do have OJT program as well, which we paying the employers, uh, up to three thousand dollar area personally high through our program. So you can get money back from putting out general fund to solve some of the issue. Jared Beckham knows about that, so the boy do have bus drivers and other, uh, participants in your, in your area, in your department. Uh, so, so it's, it's, it's a lot of things we can do, but this is one, a lay-by program that we're using for the, for the student. But we do have other programs that can afford you all to put money back in your, your, your funds to offset that cost. And then you grab more buses, more motors, and you talk good things.
I'll move to approve it.
Okay, Mister Johnson, that's, uh, it sounds like a win-win. It does. Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm sorry, Miss...
Get a motion, I'm moving to approve it.
I said.
Okay. It's been moved.
So we do it.
It's been moved by Miss, uh, Davis and second by Miss, uh, Spike that we approve the MOU to provide job placement for Macon County high school students. Are you ready for the question? All in favor of approval Paxton Group, the MOU with Macon County school system, let it be known by I?
Uh.
Opposes? So it's approved, Mister Johnson. Is that time, is that fast enough for you, sir?
Yes, fast enough. I really appreciate it, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, sir, thank you.
Okay, we got some updates, right?
Yes, uh, Miss Susan Powell, Focus School Improvement Specialist, she's gonna come and, uh, give us some good, good news tonight.
I've heard a lot about that.
Oh, my God.
A far off. Yes, ma'am. How are you tonight?
I'm well, y'all take one of those if you pass, and then I'll just, uh, take a moment of your time. Um, for those of you don't know me, I'm Susan Powell. I'm the, I like to say I'm the friendly school improvement specialist. Um, I've actually, I'm designated out of Chattahoochee Flint Risa. And I strictly work with focus schools, those schools that are designated as a focus school. And I've actually been working with Macon County now, I had to calculate for years, um, eight years. Either I'm either highly effective or highly uneffective. But, um, I actually go back to the middle school and I worked with them, um, Mister Manor, you remember that as well? And, uh, when we were on the list and we did the work and came off that list, and that was a great day. And we also have something to celebrate as well today, because the middle school, and I'm, I'm sure you may have received some form of notice. But the middle school has made the progress necessary to exit the list. Now, in your sheet, and let me tell you, exiting, I mean, just the milestones alone with the change in the assessment has put us all on our ears as far as how we do business. And that in itself has made us really have to dig in and lean in as leaders and really look at the work in a different way. I almost think of it like, um, a football coach, like Coach Copeland. You have to strategically know how to place your people, who's gonna play what position, and you have to run that play. As I say to, what is it, Miss Green, till the cows come home? But if you look at your paper there, I, I'm a big graphics person. Sorry, the internet went down when the color printer was getting ready to print. But if you'll notice that, how did Macon County Middle School accomplish the goal of coming off the focus list? Cause you really do have to get around the work. Well, if you'll notice, we have a quartile of children. And you know that with milestones, our children are either quartered into, based on their performance, they're either identified in the beginning learner range, developing, proficient, and distinguished. Well, we have to then determine, if you'll look at the next, well, who's in each of those quartiles? And who can we strategically move with a little bit of support? Who's gonna need a little bit more support and who's gonna need intensive support? And that type of progress monitoring takes literally a village of people doing that. But if you'll notice, one more page, I call it mining the gap, because what got Macon County on the list was the gap, they call that, the milestone, when you look at your CCRPI, there's a tab that says achievement gap. That gap is the performance of our bottom quartile students, okay, those who fell in that bottom twenty-five percent compared to the state's bottom twenty-five percent, okay? So how they performed. So what we're trying to do is close that gap. Well, to close the gap, we gotta move some kids out of that quartile, don't we? We have fewer children performing in the bottom twenty-five percent. So what did we do? And this is where, let me tell you about committed people, just, as I call, roll up your sleeves and do the work, okay? You identify the students, so we know who they are. You then take a cross-section of, from each of those quartiles, and you then set goals with teachers. Well, gee, this kid's within twenty-five points, I think I can get him there. Well, guess what? You're gonna sign your name to it, cause you're gonna say you're gonna do the work to get him there. So you do goal setting. You really gotta get in and say, because, yeah, we want everybody, but is that humanly possible to go from zero to sixty? No. But guess what? If I, I can move five, and you can move five, and you can move five, and you can move five, guess what? We've moved a village. And it's sort of almost like you say, oh, my gosh. Sort of like statistics, you know? And you're saying, what is the chance that this child is gonna move into? So we really, it gets down to knowing who's where and who's on whose list. Where are your kids, where's your list? So then we took a group of them, fifty-two to fifty-five students, and this is the group that's called the Dog, Dog Pound Club. And those then get an additional layer of harassment, I mean, of support. At elementary school, we called it the Fifty-Two Club, and you bear down, I mean, you know, you can run, but you can't hide. And I said, because we know these kids are right on that brink. And you don't really realize a kid can, who may not be raising a ruckus, can either make you or break you. And so you don't want those children that sometimes fall through the cracks, so you go after them, and then we assign them a mentor. And we do a check-in and check-out. It's hard work, cause you gotta, you gotta do the work. And what's Miss Powell gonna ask? When's the last time you met with your dog pound? Where's the evidence, where's your documentation? Are you goal-setting, are you staying on them, are you doing the work? So teachers, that everybody's leaning in. So then we work at providing professional learning that supports that work. So what was the focus this year? You know, teachers have teaks that they're evaluated under. And inside of that, yes, you're evaluated under those ten standards, but inside of that, there's a focus around standard number eight. And standard number eight speaks to highly engaged, very rigorous instruction in which students self-monitor. That's efficacy. And what do we talk about our kids, you know, they don't wanna be responsible for anything? Well, we've leaned in to say, kids who actually have a say-so and sort of a choice about and goal-set and have somebody giving them feedback, research shows that they'll rise to the occasion. So we've leaned in on that. And guess who's getting a big old dose of it? The dog pound. And I said, you, you start, yeah, we wanna move the masses, but guess what? You build a winning team, like a football team, one player at a time. And you also do that with teachers and your teacher leaders. So inside of that, we've drilled down on our focus. So then you say, well, what are we doing to keep our hand in the plow? You know, I like all these things, I actually, twice I've been a preacher. Well, actually, my, and my family's out, and I got a brother who's a preacher, my mama was a teacher, my dad was an engineer. But you gotta keep your hand to the plow. And so that's what we've been doing. Cause you wanna, yeah, but another saying I have is, have you got processes? Cause if you can't talk about your processes, you don't have processes. So we've been working to implement strong processes, okay? So that's protocols, the way you do business. Monitor them with a vengeance, even when you don't want to, cause dog pounds will ask you about them. And then you support and give that feedback and encouragement to keep on even when you're tired. So they've worked to develop processes around collaborative planning. And some of that great work's taken, I've seen that we've all been sharing those pieces, and that's good. I mean, as I call, what is our universal process? We've been conducting instructional rounds, going in and actually every, as I call, well, the goal, and even Mister Manor knows, the goal should be twenty observations a week. You think, twenty observations a week? Because if you are not living in the classroom, you have no idea if learning's taking place. That's the priority. Discipline's not the priority, okay? The priority is instruction. So we've worked really hard to do the work, and then we have gallery walks, in which we actually examine student work and have really gotten the teacher leaders now pulling into that to say, is this truly aligned and does this work show evidence and proof of learning? And then we actually started with our ELA teachers with training on using video rounds, in which we record and teaching teachers how to be reflective. We usually don't have time to reflect, heck, you're just trying to, you know, get through the day. But learning how to be reflective in your practice. And that takes time, and what we're teaching is, what are you seeing and what are you hearing? What are you seeing you as a teacher doing? What are you hearing you as a teacher doing? What are you seeing as a children doing? What are you hearing children doing? And there are things that highly effective schools do to support that. So we're leaning in because we wanna be good at our practice. But we need to reflect, not to always be evaluative. So we've been pushing that piece, and our goal is to push that out even further next year. And then we've been conducting core, which is small group, and cabinet, which is your teacher leader and, uh, department chairs. And we're always looking for our students learning at high levels. What's the proof? Because we can sometimes fool ourselves, because teachers, in, in general, we wanna fix it and make it all look nice. Cause we definitely, we want everybody to, you know, to succeed, but we have to be brutally honest. And I think going through the reflective window, uh, and looking through that lens will get us there versus the punitive. Um, but Macon County Middle School has done the work. And, and let me tell you, cause my boss, I mean, jeez, you know, where's the evidence of your impact? And I'm not claiming credit. What I do is just probably irritate everybody and ask enough questions and him enough and provide you a tool, let's go practice with it and just say, you know, let's, come. As my superintendent used to say, come walk with me. And we're, it's a great thing to celebrate right here at Milestones. I think even this after, and if you know how, anytime you have a change in an assessment come, or even a referendum of practice coming down the pipe. Anytime you're implementing, first year, you'll have a little jump, second year, you take a dip. And everybody's, oh, my God, we worked so hard, what happened? How did we lose points? How did we drop on the CCRPI? You should expect a couple of points, but this will be the year you'll see a bump. And I, I've been in school improvement long enough to know that, you know, you ride it, but you ride it hard. And you hold your folks accountable, and they've done the work. And thank you, and I hope you will celebrate that, put it in a billboard and in the newspaper. And, uh, commander teachers, you've got some rare committed folks.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. We need all the good news story we can.
That's right. You have a picture on, or...
Thank you.
Read it, then you just hate.
I'm happy for that. You're right. Okay, uh, other matters, sir, we have a summer read?
Yes, sir. Summer reading program, uh, I think everybody's got it. Everybody can see that? I got that in your notes. You should have a hard copy if you can't pull it up. Basically, the, uh, the Montezuma Public Library is, uh, asking us to support them in this, in the, uh, summer reading program. They've doing this with all the businesses in, in, in Macon County, and, well, especially in Montezuma. And one of the things they're asking, just, just for, uh, whether it's, uh, you know, like it says here, prize coupons, uh, fast food coupons, uh, something to, to encourage the kids to read over the summer and ask the, uh, school system just to be, uh, committed to, to doing that. So, so it's, uh, and again, that's just agreeing to partner with them over for the summer. These are all our kids.
Yeah.
These benefits our kids and we're willing to, uh, want to do that, because that is literacy is what we want, want to focus on the upcoming years. So that, I think that would be the right thing to do, so.
Okay, we'll do that, alright.
We don't need to approve that. Head start contract, uh, that's, that's coming up.
We had a call meeting, skip over it.
Skip over that. Okay. Skip over that.
Yeah, we were saying we're gonna discuss it.
Okay, that's it. I apologize to that, I didn't see that. Let's, um... Alright, we were looking for opportunity now, one of the things we wanna do is have a call meeting to discuss upcoming offers, uh, to prove the teachers that will be coming back. We wanted to prove a date to come in, because that needs to be...
Is that Thursday?
Um, we can do it Thursday. Um, we can do it Thursday.
I had a, I think we was having a meeting Thursday.
Well, yeah, well, I think they threw it out for Thursday, to see if everybody...
I don't think everybody said, from my part, everybody said okay.
Everybody said okay, so that was making sure that's, is that date Thursday?
We're working 10 hours a day, and I, I got permission to be out.
Thursday, I mean, that's, that's okay with you guys, right?
I don't know what it's about.
Have a time, but...
Yeah, we can make it to six or seven.
What's best for you guys this time? I know it'd be after your working hours, but...
Six.
It's six, okay. Okay, so what, what I need...
How long do we expect it to last?
I don't anticipate it being...
No more than an hour.
Yeah, 30 minutes. Well, it depends on how long they have, I want to have a lot of debate.
Yeah.
30 minutes?
I don't anticipate...
30 to 45 minutes tops.
So, so we need to, uh, what is that? That'll be the...
That'll be this, this coming...
That'll be 13, right? At 6 o'clock. Okay, so we're gonna need, we'll need to add a motion and a, a call meeting to discuss Fisher Business. Can I get a motion to that?
No motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Blue and Senator Maynor at 6 o'clock to discuss Fisher Business. All in favor, let it be known by aye? Aye. Opposeds? Okay, so at 6 o'clock on, uh, the 13th, we'll meet here again to, uh, take care of the business of the school system. Okay, sir. Uh, next is the head start, that's what we're getting.
And that's the contract discussion. I don't know if y'all have, do they have a copy of the contract, Mr.? I want to kind of pass that around, let you, that's, that's the, um, the contract, I'll pass that around.
It's the same one we usually do, isn't it?
Right, it's the same one.
I think we ended last year with our first time, right?
Right, and this is the, this is, this is the...
They closed up part of that.
Right, yeah, moved over here. And this is basically just approving this again for another year.
We hadn't had any problems, what do we have?
No, we have problems. And, you know, they're abiding by their agreements.
We ain't had no problems, I don't have no problems.
Right.
And then this, this, if we approve this contract, it'll go from what, to next year?
Yeah, maybe in the year, we'll have to do this again next year.
April 2018.
Yeah. Okay, uh, no, no objection to that?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Okay, uh, can I, Mr.?
I second.
Mr. Blue has motion, and Ms. Spikes, the second, that we approve the contract for the head start program at elementary school. All in favor, let it be known by aye? Aye. Opposeds? So it's approved. FYI?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Uh, just to, just to be, FYI, you got, in, in, beginning of June, I think it's, uh, the days are 7th through the 10th, or the 9th, Saturday, 8th, 10th, 10th is correct. Uh, we had GSB summer, GSBA Summer Conference.
In Savannah.
June 7th through the 10th.
In Savannah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
In Savannah, that's correct.
I already got registered, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, just need to make sure that, take care of those things.
We're registered, right?
What's that now?
We're registered, right?
Yes, you are registered, yes.
I'm fine.
Make, make sure. All right.
Lot of thanks.
Yeah, lot of thanks. Uh, as you know, that, uh, Mr. Folks family had petitioned us about a sign in honor of, of their father. Uh, this is his son, uh, the, actually, this is, this is his, his daughter. Uh, I just want to read this shortly, this is, this is a really good card, and I think it'd be worthy of, of reading. It says, Dear Macon County Board of Education and Staff, the family of Jack Folks wants to thank you, each of you, for allowing the sign we donated in his honor to be hung at the entrance of the Board of Education. Improving the schools and promoting education was his passion for many years. By honoring him with the hanging of his name plaque, his efforts will be remembered for years by the community of Macon County. Sincerely, Lillian Folks Maynor. So I thought that was very nice and worth, you know, I want to share that with the board.
Okay.
A lot of times you don't get a lot of thanks for some of the things that you do, but I think that was nice.
All right.
And, uh, the last on FYI, Work Miss Comp Station Certificate of Exac- we have knocked that down. It is, it is, we are, we are, as I mentioned, outstanding state of year. I mean, they below 50, I think it's helped me remember Ms. Norah, below 15% or something of that nature.
It's under 25%.
Under 25%, under 25%. So, uh, he came, and we, we, uh, we got to get a picture with him, but this is, this is something that we're going to hang up, we're proud of, because you know, in the past years, we've had a, a lot of, of Work Miss Comp cases, and we were able to knock that down. A lot of that work I want to give to Ms. Partain. She was, uh, she was very instrumental in, uh, manning this, this, this process, in, uh, Work Miss, uh, the Work Miss Comp process. And she's been a tremendous asset in the law. One of the things, the key things that we do now is, of course, she starts the process of the paperwork, and, uh, we, we bring them in and talk to them and talk about what did they do, uh, what, what was some of the things that we could focus on to do better, you know? And we, we got to do that, and we went through some walkthroughs at each of the schools, and just pointed out things that need to be. And they made the corrections, and they made the, the changes necessary for us to receive this this year. So I just want to give credit where credit's due, so...
Will you show up there?
Oh, and it will. We're starting, it's starting, it's going to start coming now.
I mean, they didn't even answer us.
Right. And now that, what, what he talked about, he didn't really want to share it, is, is that now we're going to be marketable to other Work Miss Comp, because we have lowered our rates. And so that's going to be a very positive thing, because now they're going to be competing where we was. Nobody wanted to touch us, I'm just being real. Now we're going to have several companies bidding for our, our services, this, this. So, there you go. So I just wanted to share that with you. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, but let me just mention, when we come back Thursday, it's not, make sure, just put a blurb down there, so we'll remember Mr. Beckham's presentation, and we can discuss that again, but I know you'll have further information on it.
Sure.
Okay, so that's, that's all before we go into taking the session. Do, do we have anything, board members?